Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield Town Council Candidates Debate for the upcoming April 23 annual town election. I'm the moderator for the debate. My name is Bill Carroll. Before the debate, lots were drawn to determine the order of the candidates. The candidates in the debate are Tony Luongo, Peter May, Jonathan Chimes, and Ann McGonigal-Santos. The press panel this evening is reporter Mark Sardella from the Wakefield Daily Item. And presenting questions submitted by Wakefield voters is Colleen Geddy, organizer of the Room to Write, which is here in Wakefield. There are no opening statements in this evening's debate, and now I have to read this because David Watts Jr. makes me. "In turn, a question will be asked of a candidate by the press panel. That candidate will have two minutes to respond to the question. Following that response, each remaining candidate will have the opportunity to present his or her own one-minute response to that question, to allow for as many questions as possible in the time available while maintaining the ability for all to have a chance to respond. Candidates should please keep their answers short and to the point. Questions have not been provided to the candidates in advance. Questions must be relevant to the issues important to the town; that's for you guys. And questions of a personal nature are not allowed, nor personal responses." I don't think we all have any trouble with this evening's panel, but you will know. The producer requires the moderator to maintain strict compliance with the stated time limits in order to be able to have as many questions as possible, so no one should interpret any bias or anything if I have to sort of remind someone that their time is up. I'm told that I will govern all conduct of the debate, so let's kick things off. Mark Sardella, your question to Tony Luongo.
Tony, do you think the town is becoming overdeveloped? And does the town have a strategic plan for handling development?
So, as far as the overdevelopment goes, I have been an opponent of some of the recent projects proposed. I was at a planning board meeting two weeks ago to speak up against the number of units at Tarrant Lane where we saw it go from 190 units to 175. My main concern with that is the impact, not only to the infrastructure of the town, but to the school system. We just spent $6 million in the Walton School. Can we take the additional 175 units at Tarrant Lane and throw that into the mix? I don't think so. Also, we have another unit, Greenwood Station, and that is, I believe, 27 units, and that is too big for that lot. Again, I worry about the impact to the school system, to the infrastructure, and to the very fragile parking situation in downtown, excuse me, in the Greenwood location. So, we do have a plan. It's part of the whole mixed-use strategy, where we have apartments upstairs and retail space down bottom. But I really think, plus the fact that we have not met our 10% criteria for low-income housing, so we can try to, you know, beat down some of these projects, but until we get to that 10%, I believe we're about 8.8, there's not much we can do except try to negotiate like we are at Tarrant Lane, you know, from 190 to 175 and hopefully down to 150.
Peter.
Yes, so, a lot of our strategy was based on changing our mixed-use. The zoning board and a few of the groups actually spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to bring businesses into town, and part of that was changing the zoning bylaws, and that's key. So, Tonos was part of that. That was a great use, mixed-use, and it's near the railroad station. It's near MBTA parking for buses as well, and that's key to keeping the town alive and moving forward. You can't, it's a double-edged sword. You have too much construction, people are upset, and you have no construction, too many people are upset. So, the main thing is to be able to have a combination. We needed to do some changes, and the zoning bylaw changes for the mixed-use was key.
Thank you. Jonathan.
You know, as we think about development, I think it's important for us to consider each project on an individual basis. You know, there are some projects that I'm very supportive of. I like the idea of taking, you know, sort of overdeveloped, you know, underused industrial space and thinking about mixed-use development in those spaces. Those are the types of things that I think as a community, a lot of us would support. What I don't want to see is overdevelopment in areas where we have green space and overdevelopment in areas that changes the character of the neighborhoods that we have in place. And so, from my standpoint as a town councilor, I'd look at each project individually. I do applaud the volunteers on the planning board and the Board of Appeals who spend a lot of time doing exactly that, and while I think sometimes we all may have our own opinions on some of the products of those works, I think we have to respect the work that does go into that.
Thank you. Ann.
I think we need to be cautious in our expansion plans, but be very cognizant of the changing demographic nature of who's coming into town and what the market is demanding. We do have plans. As several have mentioned, we adopted the mixed-use at-town meeting, which allowed us to have some creative buildings and projects come into town. I think what also has been mentioned makes sense, and our town clearly is showing that we are, we work collaboratively and we work successfully because the ZBA and other boards have looked at each project individually, have downsized some of these, have tweaked some of them, have looked at the parking issue at Greenwood Station. So, I think we're in the 128 corridor. We have the commuter rail. We have young people moving in. We have people in Wakefield downsizing. So, I do think we have to have a robust development plan, but our boards work well together, and I think we'll keep track of these.
Next question.
What policy changes do you see the town council making regarding acceptance and diversity? What individual responsibilities do you see town councilors having in this role? And what role do you see town council having in bringing together town groups?
We're already doing quite a bit of that right now. The gender diversification, I think you're talking about for committees, boards, et cetera, that may have more men involved right now. We have the website also that is indicating what appointments are possible. We have a new bylaw coming up shortly that's going to push the interpretation and also what's in the actual committees, so which qualifications need to be, what's involved with the timing, when they meet. And I think that right now, gender diversification, excuse me, I looked up with the town clerk and found out over the last nine months, from May through February, we have had 70% women appointed, which I was surprised at, but happily surprised at. So, I think we're giving more information out what the committees and boards are made of. We also are talking about other ways to give that information to them, so whether it's a website, whether it's paper, whether it's at our meetings. So, I think the issues, the gender issues, I think are important, but I think we're qualifying them. And I think moving forward, we're very conscious of it, but also we're aware too that, you know, you can't force women into appointments, but that's not the point. The point is make them aware of opportunities that they can move forward and join with the town.
Thank you. Jonathan, one minute.
Sure. You know, when I think about this question, you know, certainly gender diversity and gender balance within our boards and commissions is one piece of it, but, you know, there also is a pretty significant lap of diversity in many forms on our boards and commissions. And I think about the Michelle Obama quote, "That sameness breeds sameness," and to me, what that speaks to is a need for us as town councilors to reach out proactively. It's great to have the information on the website. I think that is sort of the bare minimum of what we need to do. I think what we as town councilors need to do as well is be at the forefront of getting out into the community, talking to people, understanding where they are speaking, you know, make sure that we're hearing their concerns, and invite them into the process. Tell them about how to get involved and make sure that we bring people into it. You know, ultimately, at the end of the day, our job shouldn't be just to wait for people to come to us. We've got to reach out to them as well.
Thank you. Ann.
As one of the town councilors who pushed our name change to reflect the genders on the board, as someone who's often been the only woman in the room, diversity means a lot to me, but it goes beyond just gender diversity. It goes into racial diversity, ethnic, religious. I think as members of the town council, we need to embrace diversity, embrace inclusion, which is a little bit different than diversity, making people feel that they belong to have a seat at the table. We also have to recognize that Wakefield as a town is not super diverse. That doesn't mean we can't welcome and make the folks in our town feel as if they belong at the table. So, as the town leaders, we have to show that. We have done that by supporting the Human Rights Commission, supporting programming in town, so I feel like we are doing a lot more than we've certainly done in the past.
Tony.
So, as a town councilor, it's always been my approach to take the best person possible for the committee post or the job, but I feel I have a responsibility to the citizens of Wakefield for that. Actually, we're pretty equal among department heads within the town government structure itself. The last two appointments were women in human resources and communications. Our committees and boards, if you look across, they're fairly even as far as men and women. Can we make improvements? Absolutely. But again, my approach is just find the best person possible for that position.
Next question is to Jonathan.
One of the charter changes on the upcoming town election ballot will raise the number of signatures needed to call for a referendum election on a town meeting vote. What is your position on raising this threshold?
Thanks, Mark. I, you know, at town meeting, I supported the compromise of the 2.5% threshold on the signatures. I think that's a reasonable place to land that balances the need to have citizen input and an opportunity to reconsider something that was voted on at town meeting while also not making that bar too low. I think the debate over this issue, though, is bigger than the 2.5%. When I look at this question, to me, it speaks to a larger concern about participation in government and participation at town meeting, and I'd like to see opportunities for us to increase the opportunities that people have to participate at town meeting. I think one way to do it is to have forums before town meeting where people have a chance to ask questions about an issue, particularly something like the Public Safety Building last year, which was complex. It was difficult. There's a lot of nuance to it. I'd like us to think about ways in which we could allow proxy voting or remote voting for people who aren't able to attend in person. I'll tell you, as a parent of four young kids, it's really hard for both my wife and I to be at town meeting unless we're going to hire a babysitter, and while we may be able to afford to do that, some families, that's a struggle. I think we also need to think about alternative days for meetings, again, different ways in which people can get involved in town meeting and have their voices heard. You know, I mentioned childcare is one thing, and one of the things I credit Councillor Santos for is working with other members of the council and the Boys and Girls Clubs to have babysitting available for town meeting. And again, as a young parent, that's critically important. I hope we seize on the momentum that that opportunity gave us and that we do more things like that to make sure that people can get involved.
Ann.
I would love to explore ways to increase the population of folks who show up to town meeting. For 30-plus years that I've been involved in going to town meeting, there were certain meetings that generate a lot of people and others that generate not much. I am absolutely in favor of raising the vote 2.5%, which was a compromise that the town councilors debated at town meeting. It would be about 460 to 500 signatures. That is not, to me, too much of a bar to ask people to overturn a yes vote, and to suggest that this has anything to do with voter suppression is insulting to what voter suppression actually is. This is not voter suppression. We're simply saying folks have to work a little bit harder to get the numbers to overturn a yes vote. Many of the towns around us have 3, 5, 6, 10% that is required. Some towns don't have any process at all to overturn a vote. We're in the compromise, and I think asking someone to overturn a yes vote for people who stuck it out at town meeting and showed up to vote is not something that is overburdened.
Tony.
So, the Public Safety Building question passed overwhelming at town meeting. I got up and spoke in favor of the project at town meeting. The 450 to 460 to 500 signatures is not a lot to ask for someone to gather signatures. We have, you could probably do it in a day in downtown Wakefield, hanging out by the post office or by Shaw's or one of the businesses. But to Ann's point, Wakefield was one of the lowest towns in the area for the amount of signatures required to overturn something like this. It's something that needed to be done just to bring us up to the 21st century.
Peter.
Great question. Voter suppression, as Ann mentioned, it's not even close to, I don't know where that one ever came from. This is one that we all took very much to heart. When this happened, the safety building, take that for the example for this petition, the signature petition. Two and a half years with between architects, town council, FinCom, Building Committee, hundreds of hours, hundreds of people involved, and to get to the point where 80%, Tony mentioned that it was a majority, it was 80% that were surely in favor at town meeting. To have a 100 petition signature list, bring it to a referendum, to a ballot question to be voted on was horrible. And I think right now, the police and fire department are actually suffering that right now. They're still very professional about it, but they need more than we're giving them. So, the 450 signatures to 500 is a minimum threshold in my idea.
Thank you. Next question is to Ann.
As appointing authority for the zoning board of appeals, you also have the responsibility, perhaps the duty, to examine its decisions. In recent 40B development applications to the ZBA, the board has decided to allow some developers to create less affordable units than the mass 40B statute requires for such developments. Wakefield has lost at least 10 affordable units as a consequence. Until Wakefield's housing represents 10% affordability, any and all developers can infill and overbuild until the 40B statute as they are now. Will you, if elected, consider requesting the ZBA to address these concerns?
I would certainly talk to the ZBA to address those concerns. I think the ZBA has done a good job, and I think they take each project individually and look to see what is needed for that particular site, for that particular project. Affordable housing is different in Wakefield than it is in other surrounding towns. I know that we've talked to folks in Wakefield, young, single women who, it's their first apartment, a mom who's recently divorced, moving in with her kids. Those are the type of affordable housing units that have been supported in our projects. In the, I'm forgetting the name of it, the one above Tonos, but I think the ZBA is mindful. Is it as much as some folks might want in town? Perhaps not, but we know we need to edge up to that number. We've working towards it. As I think Tony had mentioned, we're not far from it, but would I be willing to dictate what the ZBA does? No, because I think we work really well collaboratively with them. Would I voice concerns if I had them? Absolutely.
Tony.
The ZBA does a great job on what they do, and it's not my or town council's role to really stick our nose in it unless there's something that, you know, really off-base. So, the project you're referring to, there was some remediation involved with some contaminated soil, and that's why they were allowed to go less than the 10% required. So, there's, I mean, yes, if you're looking at it black and white, they did not make them have the required amount of units for affordable housing, but on the other hand, the developer is cleaning up some contaminated soil to make up for the difference.
Peter.
Yeah, I mean, the ZBA's been doing a great job, and I think it's important that we still keep track of what they're doing and when they're doing it. It's just that we really can't cross the line and tell them what to do. Tony had mentioned a few different projects, and even the recent one with the Turan, that actually is, that's a project they've scaled back because it was just too tall, overwhelming some of the houses in the neighborhood, actually. And I think that that's a good thing, that they are aware of that. The, back to the question, part four, the 40B, I think that's something we do need to get to, but we also need to be aware of overbuilding and changing the character of the town just to get to a number. I think that's important. Be aware of that.
Thank you. Jonathan.
You know, as I mentioned earlier, I think when you look at any development, you have to look at that development individually. And so, while I wouldn't say that I would never be willing to, you know, forego an affordable unit if there are other considerations like an environmental remediation, it would be very hard for me to do that. And so, you know, certainly as I looked at a project, the bar for me to be able to give up some sum of affordable units would be pretty high. You know, the reality is, we do have an affordability issue in this town. You know, we hear it from our seniors. We hear it from young people that would like to move into Wakefield. It's something that we need to be talking about. It's something that we need to address. And so, I think, again, as I look at some of the decisions of the ZBA, if I was being asked if we're willing to give up an affordable unit, that bar would be high.
Next question is for Tony.
Many surrounding towns are struggling financially. Melrose is facing an override question for operations. To what do you attribute Wakefield's relatively sound financial condition?
Excellent question, Mark. So, our fiscal reserves, we have about $10 million in free cash and stabilization fund. We've addressed a lot of capital improvement issues this year. Melrose has the vote tomorrow for an override on 2.5% to pay their basic bills. This isn't for a special project. This is just to have enough money to pay their bills. And the average tax bill in Melrose will go about $550 if this is passed, and I think it, based on what I've seen, I think it will. We have a AAA bond rating that saves us probably, you know, around $1 million a year. We borrow money to do projects. I attribute a lot of this to, you know, the town administrator, FinCom, and the town council. We all work well together, and the three years that I've been on, we have not gone up the full 2.5% on property taxes. That has saved taxpayers, homeowners and business owners, you know, well over $1 million in that period. But I, you know, I attribute that, really, it starts at the, as I say, the chairman of the board, you know, Stephen, and, you know, the work that we do as town councilors. We're looking at Redding just passed an override last year, and Stonem has some issues as well. But again, I just attribute that to the hard work of the town council, the town administrator, and FinCom.
Peter.
So, the fiscal health of the town is excellent. I did a state of the town recently, and as Tony mentioned, maintaining the AAA bond rating, that's been in existence for our town, probably for six-plus years. An example of where that makes some sense, and you see where the dollars come in at the Walton School addition, we saved $311,000 on interest payments by having a AAA bond rating compared to a AA. The OPEB is $16 million. We've kept the town at 2% increase instead of the 2.5% that we could go to for the last six years, actually, but I've only been on the town council for three. So, that equates to about $1.5 million for the last three years, and the prior three years would also be another $1.5 million. So, we're not taxing the taxpayers. Redding Meadows have passed or are trying to pass huge 2.5 overrides, and as Tony mentioned, the vote actually in Melrose is tomorrow, and just for the day-to-day operations, and that's not acceptable. We will not be doing that in Wakefield.
Thank you. Jonathan.
So, you know, we have a lot to be proud of in Wakefield when it comes to our financial stability, and as a member of the Finance Committee, you know, as someone who's worked with the town council, the town administrator on financial issues, I'm very proud of that. As folks mentioned, our bond rating is good. We've taken a lot of really positive steps to fund our pension liabilities, which is positive. And I do want to credit the town administrator and the Human Resources Department because their savings on health insurance costs for the town actually has been pretty significant. I do want to correct one thing that Tony said. Our free cash and stabilization actually has fallen a bit below $10 million, based on the spending that we've had in the last year, and probably will fall further based on what we will likely approve at town meeting. And so, one of the things we have to be mindful of is that we've also been lucky in this community. The economy's been doing well for the last decade, and that's helped our financial situation. That's not always going to be the case, and as the town council, we've got to work with the Finance Committee to make sure that we have a plan to assure our stability going forward.
Thank you. Ann.
I think everyone has talked about our bond rating and what we've done with OPEB, so I'll take this answer a little different tact. I actually think we're in such great financial straits because of Steve Mayo, the relationship that we have with him, working with town council, the relationship we have with FinCom, and going back to town administrators, relationship he has with his directors. Everyone comes in on budget. Everyone talks about it. There's planning of the budgets. There's thoughtfulness to these budgets, and I think, I really think Steve has an awful lot to do with how financially strong we are and as a town council that we support him. I think we also, yes, the economy's great. Yes, we're doing well. We understand we are spending a little bit in capital, in coming down below the $10 million, certainly. However, I think that we also look at the future, and we have the foresight to know when to slow down, when to be thoughtful in our spending, so I'm not worried about that. Wakefield's in great shape.
Thank you. You were first on this one, right? Okay, here's what we're going to do. Because it's an even number here, and just to keep sort of fairness, we're going to flip-flop so that Mark doesn't keep asking the same people and Colleen keeps asking the people. So, your question is next to Peter May.
Peter, should the town council as a body take stands on state or national issues beyond the purview of the board?
That's a great question, Mark. Thank you. So, just read it one more time to me, just as a short.
The town council as a body takes stands on state or national issues that are beyond the purview of the board?
I would say 99% of the time. I can't think of any that we should. I think that when we have resolutions in particular, I think that we need to stick with what's about the W. I consider myself a Wakefield-centric and Wakefield-centric town councilor, and I think that we need to focus on our financial responsibility locally, our infrastructure, our social programs, and schools. I think those are the main things. If it's beyond fixing potholes and fixing schools, I think that we're wasting time. I think that's why we have state reps, why we have state senators, why we have federal folks as well. But I think that we can get lost and not be working for the town's taxpayers if we take this issue and start tackling national and state issues when we have elected officials to do that. So, I would say, no, I can't think of, I leave the 1% there for something, but I think very strongly that we should be sticking with Wakefield, period.
Jonathan.
You know, I think at the end of the day, the role of the town council is to speak up for the citizens of this town, and that means we do have to be focused on local issues, and we've got to fix the potholes and make sure we've got quality schools and all of that stuff that is hyper-local. But sometimes when we talk about national and state issues, they do have a real impact on citizens in Wakefield. I think about the vote over the transgender law in Massachusetts last year. That's something that had that question passed, that would have had a real and significant impact on people in town here, our neighbors, our friends, our family members, our children at Wakefield High School and in our public schools. I think as a town council, we have an obligation to speak out and say that that's a value that we share, that we want to make sure that every citizen in this town has equal access to rights, and I think we should be able to do that while also focusing on the local issues that represent the day-to-day of what the town council does.
Ann.
I actually can walk and chew gum at the same time, so I can tackle local issues, taxes, infrastructure, and still be concerned about issues that seem to go outside of Wakefield but that don't go outside of Wakefield. Jonathan mentioned the transgender issue. We had transgender students, parents of transgender students come to us and ask us to support that bill, I mean, to support the bill, and I was very happy to do so because that affected... that affected Wakefield people, that affected Wakefield families. I was, I'm comfortable taking a stance on issues involving gun, based on school shootings. That affects our students, our students who are frightened, who have to go through drills on what happens if there's a shooter in town. We had, we have had a mass shooting in town. We've taken issues on the opioid crisis, so I think, speaking for myself, I can look at local issues and also speak out on issues that affect the larger.
Tony?
This really comes about, about our, excuse me, discussion on gun legislation and the vote that we had to send a letter to our congressman. Given the rash of school shootings in recent years, I support it. I have a 15-year-old that goes to school here, you know, they have ALICE drills, but as far as, you know, every item or every local item or every, you know, statewide item, I think it's something the town council just has to look at it as a, you know, one by one basis.
Peter? Oh, you already went. Sorry, sorry.
I keep going though.
It was the flip-flop that caused my concern. Colleen, next question for Jonathan.
Okay. Please define what government transparency means to you.
Thanks, Colleen. I think that's a great question. I think government transparency means a couple of different things, and I think sometimes we use transparency in probably a more fluid way than the word itself means. So, to me, the first and foremost things that it means is that government takes a proactive approach to communicating with citizens. I think as town councilors, we shouldn't have to wait for people to reach back out to us, though it is important that we're responsive when people do. I think we and everyone in government needs to make sure that we're reaching out to people, that we're making information available, that we're giving people an opportunity to engage in government. I think transparency also means having open and professional processes around the way that town government works. You know, I commented recently around the hiring of our new police chief, and let me be clear, I mean, I've met with Lieutenant Scory today, I think he's an excellent choice. I am very confident that he'll do a great job. But we had a process where he was not hired in a professional way. We did not have a job posting, there wasn't a committee that came together to talk about the hiring process, there was no opportunity for officers, for the public to give feedback. That, to me, is the definition of a process that is not transparent. You know, we've got other major hires coming up in this community, the DPW director is one. I'd like to see us open that process moving forward, and I think that's really critical in making sure that we've got a government that's responsive to all citizens in the community.
Ann?
The word transparency is a great word, but it's a bit of a dog whistle for me because I think people use transparency when they don't like the end result of a process. It means honesty in government, integrity in government, to follow procedures. I would disagree strongly with Jonathan said, that we didn't follow any procedures with the hiring of Lieutenant Scory. We, on town council, have been working for years to develop wonderful lieutenant candidates, any one of whom could have taken over as police chief, and they were all talked to, they were all interviewed. Was it a committee? No. Did we have a committee to hire our last police chief? Yes, because we did not have such outstanding at the time, that's what worked. Our town charter allows town administrator to make some hirings. I think, I trust that in speaking with our town administrator, I know that this process, I support it wholeheartedly. I think the DPW will be very different, but I think to suggest that we didn't follow up in open processes for this last police chief is just inaccurate.
Thank you. Tony?
You know, I feel the town is very transparent. We are always going to have people say the town's not transparent enough, we spoon-feed them the information. We have, you know, there's items, the Wakefield item, there's items online, people can go to town hall, there's a virtual budget that is online, so people can actually go online and take a look at the budget, you know, what goes where, and how much is spent, and how much is appropriated. But as far as the police chief goes, we had three excellent inside candidates for this position that any town would have snagged up, and I could not agree with Ann more, that that's the process. Steve makes the recommendation, and we take the vote. And I'm thrilled for Lieutenant Scory, I met with him before me hand, I'd have met with him after, and I've also met, more importantly, with members of Wakefield Police Department about this appointment, and they are thrilled to have Officer Scory to become the next police chief.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, so 4.2C on the charter. Without restricting the town administrator's general appointment power as provided by this charter, the town administrator shall appoint, subject to approval of town council, the following town positions. Starts right out with police chief. The police chief was a very open process. I think it was the town administrator before Mr. Mayo that actually started to build the police force that was not really up to the professional standards at the time that we needed to get people hired from within. And I think that with Steve and Chief Smith, obviously, we've really nurtured and brought forward a lot of folks that are great candidates. As Tony mentioned, three excellent candidates we had, and the process is very transparent. The person appointed came in front of the town council with questions and comments, and half the police force was there supporting them.
Thank you.
I think we are very transparent.
Next question? Oh, you just went, yeah.
To, to Ann. Along the same lines, the DPW director will be retiring in June. What would you be looking, what should the town be looking for in his successor? And what should that process be?
The town should be looking for the best DPW director that we can find. I think I would, in talking with Steve, and I think the process will be different than the process we just had for Lieutenant Scory, who will be the next chief. I think having a committee, having a committee bring in outside candidates, have inside candidates would be, would be the most successful way to run that particular search. Not every search has to be the same way. I think there's something to be said from hiring excellent candidates from within. I think it builds the morale of a department if you have excellent qualified candidates that are vested in the town, who have lived in town or not lived in town, but just who have worked in town for a long time. I think those candidates should actually, should absolutely be looked at. But that, I can, I can see that this process for the next DPW director will probably be a more involved process as the facts dictate.
Thank you. Tony? Wait a minute, Stinson's leaving? Oh, okay, sorry. Where's he going? Tony, you're next.
He's going, retiring.
Yeah.
So, again, I go back to one of my earlier comments, I want the best person possible for the DPW director, whether, you know, it's from within or without. We have some excellent inside candidates that are, you know, interested in the position as well, but I want somebody that also knows, you know, there's a lot of new laws, there's a lot of mandates, new mandates, NEPTES is one, someone that knows that Wakefield has 90 miles of public road, and how to get the most money from the state to pay for those. So, the process will be a little different. We will probably have a hiring committee, that might include one or two members of town council, and, you know, probably some of the other committees in town, and we'll take some recommendations for them and appoint the best possible person out there.
Peter?
I agree with Ian and Tony's comments too, so I won't repeat those, but the DPW director, I think is going to be a little expanded in comparison to the way the chief was handled on the charter, which was, which was 100% accurate. We will have a committee. We should still, first, look with, from within. I think that we should hire from within the ranks when at all possible. It builds morale to no end. It's just a wonderful thing. If you've had someone who has worked in the department in 30 different capacities and knows the whole town, I think that's very important to keep that in mind, not just to automatically assume that someone from outside is going to do a better job. So, that's it.
Jonathan?
So, you know, I base some of my thoughts on this question on my experience as a parent volunteer who was involved in the principal search for the Walton School. And there were four things about that process that I think worked well that I'd like to see for the DPW director, quite frankly, any significant town position. One was that the superintendent, prior to posting the position, asked for feedback from the community and from teachers, so we got some sense as to what we wanted in the position. Two, the job was posted. Internal candidates applied, external candidates applied, everyone was given the same shot. That was a situation where we hired externally, but there are other situations, like the superintendent's search, where we could hire internally. Three, there was an interview committee that included multiple stakeholders, in that case, parents, as well as teachers and administrators. And four, there was an opportunity for the finalists to meet the public, and I think that's something else that's really critical as we think about a role as important as the DPW.
Okay. Next question, your question.
We have a middle school that is state-of-the-art, both the building and technology. We have a high school that is outdated, both the building and technology. We gave away over $600,000 in scholarships this year, so you know our town cares. What can you do as a town council member to see that the high school doesn't fall through the cracks?
So, last week, there was a presentation about the state of the high school, and, you know, Ann, Peter, and myself actually got up in support of a new high school. My role as a town counselor is to, you know, work with our state legislators, you know, Paul, Don, and Jason, and we worked together as a group really well. We also met with the SBA, the School Building Assistance Program, back in January, and, you know, talked about some different options for the high school. So, right now, we have, you know, a high school. I went here some 35 to 40 years ago. Really, not much has changed here. It's not able to meet the needs of a 20th century, 21st century learner. The classrooms are too small, it has storage issues, the labs are too small, the roof leaks. The great, the good things are, the core learning is excellent, teacher collaboration is excellent, very consistent programs, and the services to students are very good. So, the statement of intent will be refiled in April. There are three options that we can look at. One is capital improvement for the high school, and that will only address things like, you know, the heating and HVAC and windows, and that's about $78 million. Additions and renovations is also another, that's about $136 million. A new school in $2,019 will be about $135 million, and hopefully, the state will pay between 48 and 52% of that. The good news is, I have a, you know, in talking with our state legislators, I have a very positive feeling that Wakefield High will be selected next year. The bad news is, if it is selected next year, that a new building will probably be seven to eight years away.
Peter?
Okay, so addressing our high school is a top priority for me. As your chair, I'm working closely with the school committee and both town and school officials to ensure Wakefield is ready to comply with the Massachusetts School Building Authority requirements. As your chair, if we are invited into the eligibility period, we will be ready for the initial steps that must be completed before the 270-day period is initiated for the district. The statement of, statement of interest will probably result in Wakefield being asked into the eligibility period this year. I have good feelings on that, no, no facts to back that up, except that I think that I'd asked, and we received, the statement of interest earlier this year, so we have a couple of weeks to edit that, because that's a critical document to get us, get our foot in the door. And I think that we'll end up funding this with debt exclusion, whatever it happens to be, repair or replace, and it's important to keep and attract families to Wakefield, and a new school will do it.
Thank you. Jonathan?
So, as a town counselor, one of my highest priorities will be making sure that we get a new high school. I think the time is overdue, and as someone who has young children and is looking ahead at the high school, I'm well aware of the needs there. I'm quite frankly disappointed that we're submitting our application for the fourth year in a row, and I'm disappointed because we've submitted the same application for the prior three years. I've talked to the superintendent, my understanding is that that application is getting revised for this submission, and I hope that leads to a better result, but the fact that we submitted the same application even after it got denied three years in a row, I think is a failure of leadership on the part of the town. You know, the other point that I'd make is, building a new school is the most expensive and complicated proposition this town will ever undertake. To me, what that means is that we need to start having public discussions about it now. I think last Thursday's meeting was a good first step, but we can't let go of the momentum. We need to make sure that people have an opportunity to understand the options, share the opinions, really understand the pros and cons, and give their feedback, so that when it comes time to think about how we fund a new school, folks are prepared, they understand the options that are available, and we're able to have a comprehensive discussion.
Thank you. Ann?
I think town council needs to support the statement of interest, and the fourth time, it took the Galvin, I believe, four times before that was accepted. The statement of interest has been edited with input from the Massachusetts Building Association, with the town council input, and like my colleagues, I feel confident that the fourth time might be a charm. How do, how do we support this even more? I say we go back to what the Galvin, Galvanize movement did. They, they went to PTOs, they went to, they had public forums, they sat in living rooms, they raised funds, they ran a campaign. They had signs, we had stickers. We have to get the town involved, and we did that. We had, we went to a block of voters that were a little reticent about building a new middle school, and made them understand how important it was. I think we'll have to do that with the high school. I have faith that that's what's going to happen, based on the last meeting we attended.
Okay, that's going to be our last question. We've got two-minute closings. We're going to start with Tony, two minutes.
Two minutes?
Two minutes, yeah.
Good evening, Wakefields. On Tuesday, April 23rd, the Wakefields will have the opportunity to vote on the town council. I have a lot of fantastic feedback from our citizens, I'd like to thank everybody for the support as Election Day approaches. As you've heard several times tonight, the town is in great fiscal condition through the hard work of the town council, FinCom, and the town administrator. Our neighboring communities are passing Proposition 2 and 1/2 overrides, we're consistently coming in below that threshold. We've seen our downtown improve as vacancy rates hover around 8%. Greenwood and its businesses continue to thrive. Our first responders police fire DPW, our first rate in the envy of other communities. I have over 10 years' experience in serving the town of Wakefield. I was appointed on a committee to oversee the design and construction of the new high school athletic facilities, experience that will be needed if we move forward in renovating or rebuilding Wakefield Memorial High. Some other notable items for me, I was on the selection committee to interview, evaluate, and hire the recreation director, and that's turned out to be pretty good, and the current varsity girls' basketball coach. I'm the director and coach for the Wakefield Basketball Association, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Scholarship Foundation, volunteer for Wakefield Soccer Association, I'm an active member of the Wake Up Coalition, which teaches our young kids about some of the substantive abuse problems. I have common sense and responsible approaches to everyday challenges. I'll continue to support Wakefield first responders, I will continue to work with the Council of Aging and Chamber of Commerce, and improve our storefronts, and work with seniors to make sure that they have everything they need. You know, we passed a senior citizens' tax credit of $1,100, so our seniors, if they meet certain criteria, will be given an additional $1,100 tax credit from the town. Ann, Peter, and myself all supported that, and we're working with our state legislators right now to get that done. So, on April 23rd, please consider voting for me on town council. I have the leadership, experience, and community involvement in Wakefield. Thank you.
Peter?
Okay. Here is why I should get one of your three votes on April 23rd. As I said earlier, I'm completely about the W. I like to be called a Wakefield-centric town counselor. I've devoted my time and energy concentrating on issues that affect the daily lives of Wakefield residents. 2016, I was first elected with Tony to the town council, unanimously elected to vice-chair in 2017, and chair in 2018. Fiscal health of the town is excellent. Maintained AAA bond rating, kept the town at 2% property tax increase each year, saving the taxpayers one and a half million dollars over three years, which I mentioned earlier. Very important. Reading and Melrose have passed or are trying to pass huge Proposition 2 and 1/2 overrides just to meet the day-to-day expenses. In stark contrast to our neighbors, we are on top of our fiscal responsibility here. You do not see town council pursuing any tax overrides, nor will you. It's critical for the town council to be vigilant in spending It's critical for the town council to be vigilant in spending our tax dollars wisely and efficiently. We are reviewing budgets monthly and asking the department directors to find ways to develop methods to achieve a neutral budget. As a member of the town council leadership, I'm currently working on a $10 million Commonwealth Grant, which may go up for the Streetscape program. I'm committed to improving our streets and sidewalks. We added $600,000 to the streets and roads beyond the Chapter 90 funds. We will be requesting additional funding before the town meeting to address making more road and sidewalk improvements. We all know that there's a lot more to do in this, in town. We're currently color-coding streets to determine which roads and sidewalks are in need of urgent care. There's probably a lot of those. Home Rule petition was sponsored by the town council in 2018 for qualified seniors to save up to $1,000 off their real estate taxes. It still needs legislative approval. As a member of the town council leadership, we have hired new resource officers, new substance abuse program and recovery coaches, day schools to address the opiate crisis. Under my leadership, the town has hired a new communication manager to better exchange information with you, and that'll help in the transparency we've been discussing. Additionally, I have assigned my fellow town councillors to serve as liaisons on many town departments and boards of the town council, is immediately aware of any issues and concerns. The town has many school projects in the pipeline, including Free Capital Projects, Doyle, Greenwood, and Walton. Addressing our high school is a top priority for me. As your chair, I'm working closely with the school committee and both town and school officials to ensure Wakefield is ready to comply with all Massachusetts School Building Authority requirements.
Thank you.
And one last, in 2016, the dog park. I championed the dog park. Thank you.
Glad you got that dog park in.
Thank you.
Jonathan?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Bill, Colleen, and Mark, for sponsoring this and organizing this, of course. Thank you for WCAT, for putting this together. And thank you to Ann, Peter, and Tony for sharing the stage with me and engaging in the discussion. You know, what brings us together tonight is a shared sense of pride in our community, and there is so much to love about being in Wakefield. But there are also a lot of areas where we really could do more, where we haven't made as much progress as we need to. I believe that with the right vision and the right leadership, there's so much more that we can do to move Wakefield forward. I believe that we can improve the quality of life for all residents in Wakefield, including addressing affordability for seniors and our neighbors who have struggling to manage the high cost of living in the Boston area, and building a thriving business district, both downtown and in Greenwood. We can do more to promote greater openness and civic participation in our government. We can and we must make it easier for residents to get involved, and we can and we must assure that our town has open and professional processes for managing itself. Finally, we can do more to invest in our future, making sure that our children get the high-quality education that they so richly deserve by building a new high school. We can do all of these things, but only if we have leaders on the town council that are willing to embrace new ideas and challenge the status quo. Progress doesn't happen by accident. And as your town counselor, I pledge to bring, to be proactive, to bring new ideas and innovative approaches to town government, and to listen to the voice of our citizens in moving our community forward. I thank you very much. I invite you to learn more by visiting my website, www.jonathanchines.com, and I respectfully ask for one of your three votes on April 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Colleen and Mark, and WCAT for hosting this event. As an almost lifelong resident of Wakefield, who has seen several generations of my family live in town, I could not be more invested to make sure that this town continues to grow and continues to develop, which I believe we've been, we've seen great development in the past six years. I think being an attorney allows me to provide a depth of vision to what we do on the town council, and gives a particular viewpoint to help me see some of the pictures with that lens. I feel blessed to, to give back to a town that has given me so much. And Wakefield is a vibrant community that has seen changes in the recent years, changes that are good, in the very recent years, actually, changes that are good where growth is balanced and sustainable. Our citizens feel, where our citizens feel safe, our business community is supported, and where our natural resources are protected and enhanced. We have worked towards making sure our residents feel included, that we have reached out to folks that perhaps we didn't do as good a job in the past several years reaching out to, that we have held public forums for a lot of issues. We have asked different voices to be heard and to participate in communities. I think our fiscal responsibility shows in how strong our town is. I have said, three years ago, when I ran for reelection, this would be my third time, third time serving on the board, or the council, I suggested that the soul of our town was beautiful and impeccable, but the body needed some improvement. I think we are doing wonders to show that improvement with our revitalization downtown. I think I bring a collaborative nature to the town council. I bring folks together. That isn't lost on what certain people have been telling me lately, and I would ask for one of your three votes. It is an honor to serve this town.
Thank you. Of course, I'd like to thank the panel. Colleen Getty from the writers' room here in Wakefield, Mark Sardella from the Daily Item. I'd also like to thank the candidates. Again, the time and effort you put in is to be lauded, even just in running, okay? And I'd like to thank WCAT. David Watts Jr. puts a lot of time and effort in to provide this forum, which can't but help enhance the electoral process here. How's that? Most importantly, you need to vote on April 23rd. You've heard the candidates here on both debates tonight. There are issues out there concerning this town, so as I said earlier, if you don't vote, you can't complain. That's it for this evening. I'd like to thank everyone once again, and good night. Thank you.